Salamunah, shee mokos, dija, sambila. Eh, kuluma, ni kichela, o agamshongo, ni mosposiso, ni safunseni sadi. Eh, I don't know if maybe I am smuggling an item, but I hope it is covered in the document. I have the time to go through the document. But it seems to suggest that every child in South Africa has a right to education. I think that is what I had, yeah. But then, of course, it's a contradiction that I want to face here, which may be one of these other things, that it makes sure that all court judgments are implemented. We live, eh, I think about five kilometers from the, from Soaslet, yes, and then we also have Mosapwe. We have a lot of learners that are in our schools around here. But unfortunately, they don't have certificates, birth certificates. And if there is a court judgment that addresses that person, but unfortunately, it has not filtered down to the schools. Now, let me just pay a little bit about this. In my school, I think almost half of the learners, almost half of the learners are without their certificates. That means the budget does not take care of them. That also means if they continue with the grades, according to grades, because that's the only reason why they are kept at school. They go up, but when they get to grade 12, the system kicks them out. Some have to go back, eh, two grades backwards, hoping that they are going to get the certificate. And the system still kicks them out. Now, I'm appealing because all the officials are here, that we have been crying about this thing, about this issue all these years, but nothing to happen. So I'm just raising it as a matter of urgency. Because even next year, when the school is open, we will have the same problem. Lastly, I think if the admission policy can be strengthened so that they stay direction. Now, as it says, it says, take all the learners. There should be a learner around here regardless whether you don't have a certificate, come. And then after three months, hoping that the parents would have bought or the guardian would have bought them the, 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 the certificate. But history has taught us that it doesn't happen until they are kicked out of the system. So please, may you, eh...
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my dear neighbor from here in Africa as well. And ladies and gentlemen, everybody, that did the effort to come here, thank you very much for that. We had one of our speakers, gentleman there in the back, who's on fire. He is really on fire. He gave us an incredible impression of what the Veda Law is. Wasn't it great?
What?
But... An interview really stated what's inside the Veda Law. And that's the secret thing about writing the law was, pull in late to that matter. You have to look for the poison that might be inside it. Poison comes in small doses. And ladies and gentlemen, this is what you have to notice, what we have to do. My name is Steve Lu, I undertake the Veda Law. And I represent the losing section of the Veda Law as well. But my question to you is, if I'm going to come and present a law to you that says I will take away your voting rights, will you accept that? I don't want my voting rights to be taken away. But your and my rights have been taken away by this law. But dear gentleman, you mentioned that there is no national law in this new law about that says homeschooling will be legal for all children. It's right. But it also says that if I'm going to send my kids to homeschool, or I want my wife to test in homeschool, it says that the government has the right to decide if I can do that. So my right to choose is gone, is missing, my constitutional right is given to government. Do you want your right to vote to disappear? Do you want your right to choose to be taken away? So what we want to do is we want to reject clause 5. It removes the constitutional right of parents to choose their children's schooling and give this right to government. Furthermore, this is specifically universal declaration of human rights of 1948. Article 264, it's 43, that's space. Parents have the right to choose the kind of education that shall be given to their children. You have the right to choose and don't let that be taken away. I believe you have a couple of options. Clause 35 of the Veda Law must either be added. Recognize that new framework is required which includes other schools, or I think the alternative. If changes are deemed necessary, these can be developed in a consultation process with the community in section 51, so a decision should reflect this. This approach ensures in valid form, changes simply best, which is as effective as all of them. My last words, ladies and gentlemen, make sure that your right to vote, your right to choose is not taken away. Thank you.
Kula man kulu manu na buta ni butu owa. Aba ni ba ni buta ba ni ba party and then spuna den to be god. Kulu mama points are, say your points without really doing other things, so that we run this thing very professionally.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Peter Tora. I am the provincial manager of FEDSA, the Federation of Governing Bodies of South African Schools. Now, unfortunately, Mr. Chair, my third meeting for the timeframe, according to that. Before I start, I want to give, on behalf of FEDSA, some feedback and reflect back on some concerns that we have in this process. The communities on the outskirts of the province will be the representatives of the views of the province. While the capital or major towns are not involved in this process. And I'm, FEDSA are worried about the fact that the communities on the outskirts near the borders are the ones that represent the province, and those people staying in the risk of the bigger towns are not involved. Educators and learners cannot take part in the process before they proceed, I think, the final exams for the year. So that's also not fair. There's no input to any of the sessions. So unfortunately, this is a language barrier for us. And I don't want to speak in Afrikaans, my home language. I respect the persons here, the people here, that's why I'm speaking English. I write my best version of English, but at least you can understand me. The clauses in the Veda Law have been outlined by the representative of the Bungu Langa Justice League. And FEDSA felt that it's been influencing, influencing the audience, instead of the audience informing the committees of their view. And that is a problem to us. Yesterday's session, there was a lawsuit sent by one of the certain managers of the area, informing the educators of the area to come and join the session, not a problem with that. But in the way that say, there's all white people in the Veda Law and black people. Come guys, we give people all the white people in the Veda Law. Surely, is this what Veda Law is all about? Mr. Chair, I think that is missing the point totally. We are here for the best interest of the learners of our country, not about whites and blacks. God created people, he does not create white and black people. Though, when the Veda Law, the comments that have been submitted, FEDSA ask the following question. Will we be able to see where this has been dealt with? Will it be made available so that we can see somebody has read and has captured whatever has been said? Not everything in the Veda Law is bad. There's not before clauses that need to be amended. And some of them are really needed, we need to move on. We cannot say past 1994, we need to move on. And then it's essential that they must be changed. But FEDSA are not happy with all the clauses. Clause 2, Great Art, a wonderful idea, ideologically, it's a wonderful idea. But there's more than one million great arts that need to end the school next year, if the Veda Law is being accepted. Twenty-five thousand new educators need to be found and paid by the department at a cost of 7.5 billion naira. Can our country afford this? Do we have the means to ensure that the system will be able to absorb the great arts? Maybe the committee has decided that certain clauses in the Veda Law must be implemented at a certain stage. Otherwise, it could end up as a rastro and at the end of the day, it could be a big mess. We're not comfortable with language and the admission policies being granted to the H and D of the SGBs. It is now the mission that the governing body is best suited to determine the admission and language policy of a school. The SGBs represented by the staff, by the learners and the parents, and the community, and the community has a standard context that meets and reality of the school capacity. So this is the people that are staying around the school, they know what the needs are. Pre-1994, schools had been governed by the state, as state schools. By reducing the authorities of the SGB, public schools are moving back to state schools or calling apartheid schools. Do we want to go back to apartheid? I don't know, sir. We have our constant work. In our province, Bungu Langa schools are already under pressure to amend more learners than the school capacity to safely admit. And the reason, there's no schools being built. We need schools in the province. We need a good, modern, C or a quantified school in this community. Why does the community fall behind in one, two and three schools? We need good schools for all our learners. The emphasis is very on Afrikaans in schools. That's the reason not to admit English learners in a school, that's nonsense. There are less than 12% Afrikaans English school in our province. In this area, you can ask any person about that. My run-up, sir, thank you. The rest of the schools consist of English and African home languages. Surely, every community has a quality school for learners to attend, with quality education. A overcrowding will definitely not occur. And if Africans want to be the perpetrator, the communities will have, surely, to have a good school. Thank you, sir.
Yawo sela nani si, bini nongi deha bende, bana n'paras bo e tla. N'ombe n'akabewenu, bini muni muni s'na gashpo me, ola na, esu s'ezasena bana yasi epefu. N'wena, kusabota, n'omu n'ombe wena, bana n'wena bi. Iga kulu, bana na mefu, maya m'la na, bana n'kule, buse basun na n'omine s'kule, s'embali deba, la n'ikas s'kule. N'wenu wa n'utu manam, eh, n'omu, bafisa, bera habi, ehi s'kule. Wotwa ya mesela, ose, s'embali kro, s'ana na, bana osho, s'kule. N'wenu osho, n'wenu osho, yawo s'abota, n'wenu osho.
Good morning, everybody. I don't know if I can read this here, I'm going to scream. So I would just like to share a few things that are on our side of our administration. Firstly, that's where it's at. It's where we, we have the best interest of our child in our, in our house. We know our children, we know their needs, we've been given, and then they work on to teach and to train our children. We know their passions, their interests, we play their new styles even. So therefore, we choose a curriculum which suits their needs, their abilities, and everything that they need. Then we have the opportunity, the privilege and freedom, to build and customize a curriculum for the new generation. We do agree that reading and writing is relative, is crucial and non-negotiable when each child's basic reading plan. So firstly, also, the time that is spent with our children is crucial, sir. Firstly, I want to ask, don't limit us and don't restrict us or prescribe to us and impose that on us, as always being there. Trust us and move with us. The second thing I want to talk about, small schools. Small schools cannot be closed. Small schools cannot be closed. When children, small children especially, have, when they are in a small area, when they are in an area with a small school, even if the schooling is made in a third grade, they have school right there. If those children have to go further, much, much further, there is cost obviously involved. There is so many things involved, but the point is, those children don't have the privilege of having a school further anymore. Please don't promote small schools. It will definitely impact the family structure when small children have to, have to afford to, to, to large schools. Larger schools also then could have a negative impact on the school, thank you very much.
Hello, the joy of this is, I'm part of the retrospectives case, I'd like to have a person to attend to, yeah, call me, maybe.
Salamunah, n'umela, kabi, n'ukimochava, usumela, kusabota, epe la bi. N'omu n'seto, kuyas, n'akabulu, omas, n'akabulu, ndana, m'pasir, onge, malakui, afuka, feina, s'nu. S'iswa, kujayi, bani, saelo, m'asukulu, dafu, baba zalo, n'unu, ufe, e, 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 shakichi. Goto, n'omu n'seto, kuswolo, kuyas, kubedi, bana, ufe, e, s'nu, s'iswa, zage, kuyal, ope, n'akabulu. Kule, s'usukolu, s'iswa, ng'ana, b'baite, b'baite, tishere, kule, s'iswa, onge, e, s'kule, e, s'kule, kute, prati, s'kule, e. N'eh, n'omu n'seto, kusukuli, na, n'eng'a, shava, b'ana, s'kule, e, tisi, s'ker, s'iswa, zage, s'epo, e, ame, s'iswa, n'ungiza, s'ya, bi, s'ba, na, vali, e, 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 to, kula, kula, ma. S'wango, kuchan, kula, t'ak, awo, 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 bana. S'ker, s'iswa, zage, n'ungiza, s'ra, kuyal, ope, e, 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 n'omu n'seto, s'abu, kubedi, kela, de, 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 s'kule, e. Aba, s'akubri, s'ukse, 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 n'usere, n'umela, kubedi, n'ama, kubedi, s'wala, n'ali, s'ukse, s'wala, kubudi, ya, kwa, n'ali, s'ukse, s'ukse, n'ama, kubedi, ya. I'm going to tell you, it's a good point. I'm just kidding, it's a good point. I said, this is what I'm kidding, this is what I'm kidding. It's not sad. It's a good point, it's a good point. It's a good point, it's a good point. I'm going to tell you, it's a good point. But the center, I'm going to tell you, it's a good point. Let us go and say, we are here, we are here.
The final, the silver corner with registration page is by five MP. We are nervous to move away, I don't want to let it block him out of the house.
Good morning. My name is Nafal, I'm from Mungu, I'm from Suri, I'm from Ibeke, the village of Nisit. It's not related to the best interest of South Africans and our, and since it's a far greater period and it is the wrong interpretation. At bottom, we're struggling to implement the functioning of the system as it is, shadowing reported reading prices in South Africa. And now we have to give out even more strain of administration, wanting to close much needed little small schools, forcing children away from their homes and parents, thus separating the family unit, which is well proven to be detrimental to childhood. And it's putting more strain on our already struggling social function, not even mentioning the post-sexual education model and the basic commitment in the sexual health procedures as schools are asked for the authority of them. The law then objection and want to strike home education or rather to further payments by discouraging them, as stated by education ministers, further demonstrates the legal control of our children. The letters vaguely written for the homeschooling section and open to misinformation that can be used to detriment of South Africans. There's been no research done useful scientific data in home education, not of socioeconomic impact assessment, or any home education professional organizations consulted in the writing of the clause. I want also to question, are you going to determine if a particular approach is inferior to others? There are many different teaching methodologies, pedagogical approaches and methods, that all the results is in different pathways. At the moment, the league is using the registration of as of home educators as a landing term for application of a cruel term education. As seen with the case in families denied registration and because of parent event, as in the court case against the parliament. I'm willing to inform the Department of my choice to educate my children, but I will not be administered by it. If at all, even the Department official feels the need that my education model is not often up to his standard, I can also be sentenced to prison, as the parliament can deem that my child is not in public school and that I'm not educating them according to their agenda. External assessment in early education is. External assessment is used to increase the cost of home education and putting an unnecessary burden into the classroom. False narrative is created that home education is a privilege of a region as I can personally assure you that lie. As a family, we can afford the cost entirely of a school. Our education can be spitted across being a Jamaican. Furthermore, I'm saving the same money, money open to use for other children. Thank you.
Good morning. Honorable Chair members, as well as every lady and gentleman that's sitting in this audience today, I think we are all here because we love our children and we want the best for them. So that is one thing that we do have in mind. I reject the Verabo. I am a homeschooler and I want to continue to support my children. What I want to propose to you is that we should not view homeschooling as opposed to the public school system. But in South Africa, we need to make plans that are practical and sustainable. Many speakers have highlighted that we need money in South Africa and we need teachers in South Africa. We don't have those, it's not going to change. So to limit that homeschoolers want to teach their children is stealing from the parents who are unable to homeschool their children. You are taking away the opportunity for children to actually have a chance to go to school. You force homeschoolers to enter the school system. I want to assure you, yes, there are exceptions to the rule. Our first speaker highlighted a true fault. But that is an exception, that is not the rule. I think we have all agreed that the majority of parents only want what's best for their children. So they just want to be in a collaboration. I propose an amendment to clause thirty-five, section fifty-one. I ask that the minister will not have sole right in decision making, but that there will be a collaboration between homeschoolers who understand homeschooling and its unique characteristics and that they should have a joint authority in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heidi Feller and due to the time on the strength, I have spoken more before to the other objective. But I was thankful the opportunity to speak to you there, the crucial shortcomings in the South African schools and in the level. Neither of each one of the specific principles, laws, procedures or structures facilitate decisions that allow the best interest of the child to be considered when applied for a dispute for home education. This law of ours not only affects homeschoolers, but every part of the board where children's best interests need to be considered. And I'm raising this on behalf of every concerned field today. Whether children are in school or are being homeschooled, other many needs, the following factors should be considered when any decision is taken about a learner, are letting school out the safety of the learner from harm, the freedom from conscience, religion, law, belief and the picking of the learner, the freedom of expression of the learner, the learning's individualized educational needs, the impact of the learner's social development. To remember this, I propose a crucial amendment to clause thirty-five, section fifty-one slash testing of the Verabo. It is essential that the power of the Verabo's regulation should be exercised in consultation with representatives from the home education community. Such a consultative approach will ensure that the regulations developed are not only informed by tactical insights, but also tailored to safeguard the best interest of the child in a home education setting. At the same time, clause thirty-nine gives the Minister authority to make regulations on a number of subjects, such as learner advocacy, learner admission and many other subjects that parents in school should be consulted on. I ask from behalf of parents here today and children in school that those regulations also be delivered in consultation with the parents of the students and children. Please, let us unite in making decisions in consultation with parents in the best interest of our children, the future of South Africa, the country we all treasure. Thank you. I regret the wrong.
Honorable members of the Ustray of Ntiti on the education in Mpumalanga, thank you for this opportunity for me to be able to speak and to share my heart today. I reject the Verabo. I stand before you today to address the critical concern regarding the Verabo, the concern that is rooted for me in the fundamental differences between home education and traditional school education, which rendered me, in my opinion, incompatible under a single regulatory framework. Let's please begin by considering the distinctive nature of home education. Home education represents more than just an alternative to traditional schooling. It embodies a unique approach to learning. It places a very strong emphasis on customized teaching methods, tailing the major curriculum, the cultivation of a child's individual talents and capabilities. Home education is an educational journey deeply intertwined with the core values and beliefs of each family. And attempting to regulate it within the same legal framework as traditional school education is not only unfusible, but it also undermines the very essence of what sets home education apart. So in contemplating the purpose of education, let's ask ourselves the age-old question, why do we educate our children? Do we simply educate them to be able to go and do a job, to serve the state? Or do we want to educate them to be ready for life? It is my personal opinion, a very strong one, that we need to educate our children to prepare them for the broader journey of life itself. Home education is uniquely positioned for delivery and education that goes beyond the confines of standardized curriculum. It nurtures critical life skills, we foster our children's character development and we want to instill a passion for lifelong learning. That is why in my house, I have the lead learner. The Verabo in its current form lacks, it appears to lack a nuanced understanding of the distinct nature of home education. It seems to regulate home education through the same lens as traditional schooling, which in my opinion is a fundamental flaw. I propose that a more in-depth research on the current landscape of homeschooling, which exploded after the COVID pandemic, is essential. This research should encompass the diverse approaches, the philosophies and the practices within our school community. To end off, I feel that the government should rather invest in homeschooling because homeschooling saves the government money because you don't need to go to schools, you don't need to pay the teachers, you do the homeschooling. Each child who receives home education is educated, even by themselves, which is a very important question for me. And homeschooling is not easy. I know people who homeschool with less than five hundred grand a month, which is not, is very much difficult for almost free. Thank you for your time.
Can we respect time, sir, and I don't have to remind you? Please, you still have to take the other side and raise your hands.
Eh, Kamalama Mutu, from W26, Konarango Matizon, Ekomasi. Let me just clarify this. Section twenty-nine, subsection one of the Constitution contains a right to basic education and a right to a further education. This bill seeks to amend certain things, the nation to provide a great art to put in other compounds. As we all know, who put in? See, for now, put in a great art, other compounds, who are equally. And as for our parents, our, the mother penalties for parents who do not ensure that their children are attending schools. And we know, we know that there are, we have a global punishment, it's not allowed in schools. Those who commit that penalties for those who are guilty of such offense must be punished. Eh, some of us, they are here to reject the bill. I know that, we all know that. Because their school, they are, they are leaders for their kids. They are attending schools in private schools. That is why they are here to reject, because their school, their children, they are attending in private schools. And they are complying with the old private school. So Mama comply at that side, they come here and reject the bill. Eh, we know what we try in nineteen ninety-four, we never been consulted. People, they were just doing things on their own and just implementing. We are not there. But today, because we are living in a democratic state, we are giving, we are given a chance to come and support with this consultation from the members who come here, who put by us consultant, they come just to do things on their own. Previously, they were doing this on their own. We never even have a chance, who put to see by rejecting because we have not even consulted. So I support this bill. Thank you.
As far as, we're even democratic, and we must have our rights, please. Yeah.
I'm going to protect. Eh, I give all the people, it's about the issues, they know that. Overcoming the schools, I give all the time. It corrupts the education department, I give all the people, it's a lot of issues. I give all the people, it's a lot of issues, it's a lot of colleagues. And now, now it's about the people, I'm going to protect. So I give all the people, it's a lot of issues. I give all the people, if the time resources are enough, people, it's a lot of. So I just, I just, I just. I give all the time, after a month, I'm going to tell you. So I give all the people, it's a lot of speeches. Eh, I give all the people, it's a lot of. I give all the people, it's a lot of issues, it's a lot of. Because they are not sure of who is this. But I'm better, I'm not even doing that. So it's a lot of issues.